I'll go ahead and motion that we approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes from our 12-9-14 and 12-10-14 meetings and our board audit report for December 2014.
Thank you, Denise.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you.
Actually, yeah.
Is that part of that?
The alcohol licenses are.
Oh, sorry about that. Please rescind that and we'll move on. Part of the consent agenda, not only those two items, but the renewal of our alcohol licenses, a consideration to approve the following off-premise licenses for Albertson's, Freeway Chevron Harts Gas and Food, Maverick Red Cliff Station, the service station and Walmart, and item B, the on-premise license for Coral Canyon Grill, Don Pedro's Red Drawn and Gourmet Burgers, and to approve the following on-premise recreational licenses for Greenspring Golf Course and Coral Canyon Golf Course.
Mayor, do you want it amended?
Yeah, thanks.
Can I just add to it? And Denise, do you need these listed out by name or just as listed? Okay. As part of that motion to approve the consent agenda, we'll add the renewal of alcohol licenses off premises, on premises, and on premises recreational as listed.
Thank you, Councilman Staley.
I'll second the motion.
Nice night.
Staley, I.
Seg Miller, I.
Turick, aye.
Thank you. Thanks for covering my back.
I guess we get those in January. Is that right, Mayor? We get those about once a year on consent.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, threw us the curve there.
Item five, plat amendment, consideration to approve a plat amendment for the Meadows at Stewki Farms located approximately 4,800 South Cattail Way, applicant Carl Larson. Good to see you, Carl.
Mayor has stated it's a request for an amended preliminary plat in the Meadows, part of the Stewki Farms Plan Community Development, the PCD. Applicant is requesting to amend this plat. The subdivision, of course, has stated is located in the Stewki Farms development. The amended plat request is introduce a bungalow slash casita type of dwelling unit within the southern portion of this existing subdivision known as the Meadows. As you can see, it's those, I'll try to zoom in, down in the southernmost part. So they're basically eliminating the last six lots and going with this configuration that I'll continue into. The dwelling units have common area that surrounds them. They are detached garage parking areas. The current number of lots in the Meadows is 88 units or 88 lots. And with the new number configuring with these, these new type of home proposals, we'll raise it to 93. This is still well within the density range for this given area in the approved PCD. In other words, we want to make sure you don't get caught up into the zoning lots because PCDs are basically based on densities in areas we call in villages or pads or sections so forth. So it still fits within the density that was designated for this particular area of the entire PCD. A staff has reviewed the proposed amended preliminary plat and finds that it conforms to the approved PCD zoning that is part of the Stewki Farms Plan Community Development approval. Subdivision is also in compliance with subdivision ordinance of the city. The planning commission reviewed this request at their December 3 meeting of 2014. Planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the preliminary plat. The amended preliminary plat for the Meadows at Stewki Farms subdivision to the city council based on the findings, subject to the conditions. The only conditions I really want to point out to you that are different than standard are number 12 and 13, which I'd like to just read. Number 12 states, "The area in the southernmost portion of the subdivision, which is the reason for the amended preliminary plat, proposed to be the casita type dwelling units will be required to be recorded with its own phase in order to account for the required common area between dwelling units, which will also require its own CCNRs for maintenance purposes as relates to the rest of the subdivision, of course." Note number 13, "Note that the detached parking area for the units in the southwest corner of subdivision will need to be 10 open stalls versus the ones that are shown here with eight. That's just to meet the parking standards. They have room to do it. I'm not worried. I just wanted to put it in the conditions and make sure that gets taken care of before a final plat is brought before you." So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have since this is a different kind of. Now, I hope, it's hard to really tell in this picture, but these are what Carl's trying to propose here, and he's actually using this almost as a trial for the area that's down here that I just kind of slid to. There's a big medium-high-density village that's for multiple, you know, for higher densities. And I think he wants to get this in to see how everything goes. These units are a little bit different, that they don't have attached garages, et cetera. They're kind of walking to them, and so they kind of face each other with a courtyard in between, so it's more of a little walking community. I think he wants to do this as kind of a test pilot to see how it goes in proposing or get it out there in the market. I think he really wants to go with this unit. This one will just get him going sooner and kind of get that market out there, then he can develop the southern part in that medium-high-density area at a future date. So with that said, I'll be glad to answer any questions that council might have relating to this amended preliminary plat.
You know, I really like the concept of this. I think it's neat. I think it will really add to that master plan community there. The question that I have is, would this maybe attract a market for maybe a shorter-term rental properties too? Or are these designed for, you know, permanent housing, primary residence type things?
Well, these particular ones will have to be, will have to be permanent because of this village hasn't been given the tag. We amended their PCD several months back. I can't remember how many, but that's when they asked for three different areas to be designated for vacation recreational housing type proposal.
Right, and I couldn't remember if this was part of that.
This, the Meadows aren't, but this concept, I think they do want to. Once these are built to this future where you can see where it says future development area is part of the PCD for Stewki Farms, I think that area they may entertain having that, and I know they already have because they asked for that area to have that option to do that. But these particular ones would have to be solely owned. Now, they could rent them out, but it'd have to be on a permanent rental basis like any other, you know, thing. But these particular ones will have to fall within regular standard subdivision regulations and ownership rental.
Yeah, it might even be a nice second home for someone.
Right.
On that condition, number two, geotechnical study, what's an overview of that exactly? What is that?
Well, with any, these are standard for any subdivision. We always make them send in like landmark or AGEC, have all the soils tested. The reason we have them do that, so that when they're, they're going through for their final plat, they don't all of a sudden come in, then start going in to build a home and find all these clay problems or collapsible soil problems at that stage. We want them to be aware of that before they really invest in streets and everything else to that point to take care of any of the problems that may be present as they go forward.
It's nothing to do with that fault that runs through there then, is it?
No, but a geotechnical report will show stuff like that and how they're going to mitigate it and what they're going to do. So that's why many times you'll see a final plat come back in and a road's been shifted a little bit maybe because that's where the fault line is and they don't want it under a home. It's okay to put it in the street, you know, with so much setback depending on what that engineer says is a minimum. So these are just standards we make them do so they don't invest in a lot, you know, and then come later and do this stuff and find out, oh, we got all these problems. Now we're going to have to tear all these streets out, all these sewer lines, et cetera. We want them to do that upfront, and that's why we always throw those on as conditions. Hope that answers your question.
I'm assuming fire departments look at that, everything's where they can get to, sorry, some of those are a little towards the back there. I did wonder.
Yeah, and.
Cut through that parking area, you make it get back in there.
Right, and what'll happen is, is he kind of has conceptual approval of this, and then he'll wait for when the construction drawings come and then we, if there's anything that needs to be, sorry. Okay, I'm not sure who's, I wonder if Steve's back there playing with my things. You always worry about that. But the fire marshal has taken a look at this, fine with the concept. He'll wait to see. There will have to be fire hydrants probably placed somewhere, and we'll just wait till what their design comes out to be. So we kind of, again, on the preliminary plat, we just want to give the best thing to move forward, and then they'll bring in construction drawings. That's where the real nitty-gritty gets down to meeting all the exact safe fire codes, et cetera.
Drew, I've got two questions. First is more procedural. I don't see where there's any notes from the planning commission. Was this, does amended plat have to go to?
It was. They were fine with the concept. And, oh, I apologize, I didn't get your minutes. That is a faux pas on my part. But as I remember the meeting, there really wasn't much talk about. We had, I think, one citizen showed up. It was a couple, and I thought, oh no, she lives in the Meadows, she's going to be against. She was actually stood up and said, "I'm excited about this." So if there's any minutes or anything, I mean, the public hearing went really, nobody really stood up except for that couple, and they were supportive of it. The planning commission was fine with the concept with that, so they really didn't see much of an issue with it as well. They're kind of curious to see how it'll turn out. And again, I think they had the same comment that Councilman Staley had was, it's kind of neat to see these different varieties, and that's what PCD should be, is not just cookie cutter one after the other. We like to see a variety of different types of, you know, businesses and dwelling units and mix of lots of different things, so.
Do you know if any of those lots that are near this have been sold?
Well, none of them have because Phase Four, which is kind of hard to show on here, let me show you up on this TV. That's been platted, so the closest you can see would be lots, is that 50 and 127?
Yeah.
Are actually on the ground, platted lots. The rest of them, Phase Four, which is, you know, lots 49, 128, 60, those aren't even platted yet. They'll be coming in as a final plat.
I agree with Councilman Staley. I like the concept, but I look at, you know, Lot 37 there, it appears to probably be the biggest lot in the whole subdivision. It's going to have a 10-stall parking lot as its side, in its side yard.
Right.
And then the Lot 44 is also a nice large lot, it's going to have a similar problem with both covered and open parking, and so I am a little concerned about the transition. It seems to be quite abrupt. And I guess, on one hand, I could say, well, the developer can decide if they can sell those lots, right?
Right.
But.
Because the people will know going in. I mean, that's the beauty about having this at this point because I know, because they've talked to us about how quick we can get it done because the parade of homes is about to hit us. They want to get both number four and five in here right away. In fact, I already have their plats upstairs. They'll be going to the planning commission, I think maybe even next week for their final plats, barring this takes place, that we can then run them through. So the whole concept is, I get what you're saying absolutely, and I totally agree. This is one of those cases where they're going to probably build a couple of these model homes so anybody buying on Lot 44 and 37 knows they've got that next door to them. So we'll see if those lots sell, and then we'll, but they're lots, and somebody will either buy or not buy. Sure, someone may, if they don't buy, get a really good deal on Lot 44 and 37 about a year and a half from now.
Eventually they buy, the price just adjusts, right?
Yes, right. But I totally understand your, the point there because that is a fear you always have, and then the complaints that people come in, how could you let that happen? At least up here, it's nothing changed. It came in this way at this point.
Yeah, that's why I was asking if it even sold because it's even more.
Yeah, so none of them will. They better not have because it's not proper to sell any lot until it is platted. So, but the closest sellable lots are these number 50, 127, 125, 24, 23, 22 right there are the closest ones to that, and you can see it's a, excuse me, a bit of a distance from this at this point, so.
Okay.
But the great thing is, is that everybody in the subdivision got a notice, every property owner. Now, I don't know if there's houses on all those. I doubt there are. I know there's a few houses being built in Phase Three. I'm not sure exactly which lot they are on at this point, but I would venture to guess there's five to seven lots.
So any, anybody who owned one of those lots, it's not the developer got a unique notice?
Yes, every property owner, whenever a preliminary plat's being asked to be amended, so there were 88 notices that went out. Now, some of them, many of them went to, you know, the LLC Groves because they own still probably over half the lots out of the 88, maybe even less than that. But still, everybody up here in the northern part in Phases One and Two all got notices, and one couple showed up, and they were actually, said they're excited to see them come for the variety.
Thank you, Drew. Any other questions? Any questions for the developer? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the plat amendment for the Meadows at Stewki Farms located approximately 4,800 South Cattail Way.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion in a second.
Turick, aye.
Seg Miller, aye.
Staley, aye.
Nice night.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Carl. Looking forward to seeing all that out there going out. Item six, police building update, discussion update on the design, design plan for the police building, excuse me, police chief, Jim Keith.
Our architect on this project, JRC, Mr. Fox is here with me tonight. We just wanted to give you an update as to where we're at, show you again the placement of the building on the property, and then show you the floor plan again as we've changed it just a little bit to fit on that site, and then give you the renderings that have been put forward for the first renderings there, and then any questions or comments or thoughts that you may have, and we can answer any questions that you'll have in reference to any of that with the architect. So this is the property here as has been stated in the past, there's really nothing changed on that part of it as far as the building on the property. The only difference is it's setting more to the south so that we can have the staff parking and secured parking entrance from 100 East as well. And you can see we'll be sharing, the covered parking that's out front now of this building will come down and we'll be sharing that access, so it'll be more of an open campus between the two buildings. Any questions on that?
Has the footprint of the building grown at all since the last time we looked at the rendering or?
No, it has not. In fact, it's just, just a tad smaller, if anything, for the building itself. We did, what we did on the building, so that you'll understand here, is we simply took what's on the top of your screen, which would be to the north, we simply took that part of the building, which was on the west part of the building, which would access off of Main Street, and moved it to the north side so we could access it from 100 East, and which in turn required that we moved the patrol area and the detectives' area from where the Sallyport and secured area is now. We just swapped those areas so it would fit on that property. And again, you can see it comes off of 100 East there. So other than that, everything is pretty much the same.
Is there going to be court space in this building or?
No, the court will stay here. And then from there, we actually, get down here a little bit, sorry about that. We have the west-facing elevation, which will be facing Main Street. That's the back of the building that will be close to the generator that's sitting out there now, and up close to this parking area or drive area that's going through here now. And obviously, this is a rendering. One of the things we did want to point out is we tried to use the same color, and we've got some sandstone, as you'll see, as we move around to the other side in the front to match the building here. And the soffit and fascia that's showing there is not really what we'll see. It'll be more in line with what's on the building out here, so it'll be thicker, which will make it look better and more in line with what's here. We tried to not make it exactly like this building because you don't want that, but as you'll see when we get to the front of it, it actually is pretty close to that. This is a south-facing elevation here, which will be next to City Hall, and as you can see, we put a couple of gables there, the one, and then the additional one to the west to break up the roof line, so it should complement the City Hall building here as well.
And while you're on that, one of the things I would mention too is that when we begin work on this, we're going to kind of reconfigure. We don't think it'll cost really anything to reconfigure this drive through here. It's very problematic as, you know, people come through, you know, at the drop off, it's those type things, so we're going to kind of reconfigure that at the same time.
Yeah, that'll look, that'll look better and flow better through there as well. And here's the north elevation. Obviously, that's public, showing public parking and stuff there, but that'll be actually the secured parking and employee entrance on the north side there. And again, tried to make it look good from all, all areas so that there wasn't any issues with the appearance of the building. That back area is the Sallyport, bulk storage area for things that can't be stored inside, and then goes into the secured area. And then this is the front of the building here, which mirrors the, similar, not mirrors, but similar to what we have here. We tried to keep a similar roof pitch, tried to keep it in line with that. We did have to raise the bottom height of the windows just for security purposes. There will be some other things that are done around the front of that building, obviously, when it's done, but again, these don't really show the true depth of what it'll be, but we think it's a, going to be a very, very nice addition to what's here and look very good. So I guess with that being said, are there any questions on any of the renderings, the building where it sits? This leaves the bulk of that lot to the Main Street side.
I kind of had a question about, I think before you said that with the projected growth, that this should last for about 40 years?
This building will last for 40 years as a projected life of the building. We figure this building with a couple of additional opportunities in the community for satellite offices for law enforcement, maybe out in the Stewki Farms area when they get developed out there, partnering with a, with a commercial or another partner in the community to have just a satellite office, even in a fire station that may end up out there. That's where we would move some of that growth, but this will be long-term for law enforcement as their main building. Any questions for myself or the architect in reference to this? Just real quick, we'll, we'll be moving into the design and development phase now, which is the more of the detailed stuff, and so we'll be bringing that back to you as well for any input that you may have. And then the first part of March is a timeframe now that will be, if we can get everything put together, we'll be putting out for bid, and then from that point, we're hoping sometime middle to end of April, excuse me, to hopefully start breaking ground, and then we're about a year out from there, so. And please, if you have any questions or concerns or thoughts that come up after, in the meantime, don't hesitate to reach out to me and I'll do the same your way, so. Thank you.
That's good. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any questions for me at this point? Item seven, planning commission appointments, consideration to appoint the 2015 planning commission chair, and do we need to do these separately, Denise? I would recommend that we keep Jason Smith as the planning commission chair. My recommendation. Any discussion on that?
Mayor, I'd just say we discussed it last night in our workshop, and the council seemed to be of the same mind as your recommendation, so I'll make the motion that we appoint Jason Smith as the 2015 chairman of the planning commission.
I'll have a second then.
I have a motion in a second.
Nice night.
Staley, aye.
Seg Miller, aye.
Turick, aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Recommendation and consideration to appoint a member to the planning commission. I'd like to continue to ask Rex Papa, he would continue as our planning commission member, serving another term. Any discussion or question on that?
I'd be happy to support that.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we appoint Rex Papa to the vacant seat in the Washington City Planning Commission.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Turick, aye.
Seg Miller, aye.
Staley, aye.
Nice night.
You got us for a few more years, Rex. Or we got you, huh? That's awesome. Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve in that capacity. Item eight, ordinances, consideration to approve an ordinance modifying slash amending ordinance number 93-26 by adjusting the franchise area for Dixie Escalante Rural Electric Association, Inc. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This may feel like a little bit of Groundhog Day because we've gone through this a couple of times, but what we realized is that on September 24th, the council approved modification of franchise agreement with Dixie Rural Electric out there in the Sunrise Valley area. I know you've seen maps showing the new franchise line that would move from, it's basically the midpoint of the Virgin River, which is the current franchise agreement, to the top of the ridge there, kind of separating Telegraph from the Sunrise Valley area. We approved that on September 24th, but we did not approve as the ordinance allowing for the adjustment of that legal language, which adjusts that franchise territory for Dixie. I talked to Liddell Loeb today, met with him on a couple of issues, and we were talking about this. Their board has reviewed this as well, of course, is supportive of this. Actually, there's not any plans at the moment in that area, but we do know that we have our own waterline issue that'll have the pump that'll be then serviced by Dixie. It's more of a service of convenience in that area. They're much more facilitated to be able to address those services in that area, and that's the purpose for doing it. And so we have a great relationship with Dixie and appreciate their willingness, so that's the purpose for the ordinance.
Manager, the incorporation of this area into Dixie Power, they would have the same rates as the rest of their service area, they're with.
Yes, there's not any anticipation, especially with the fact that there's really no demand for service right now. They are not anticipating changing any of their rates, and since this would be absorbed into their existing system, I'm not sure the PSC would actually even allow them to stratify it yet. So Mike's rate that he would get, he'd have to, of course, pay an impact fee, but quite frankly, the impact fee would be cheaper than us building the substation.
And it seems like Mike had talked about gas there at one point, but it sounds like this might be the better option for that pump station.
Yeah, okay. And this is a better option just because they're closer and they don't have to build a substation, and then also, of course, great, and it'd be, they're kind of industrial.
And nothing has changed. I mean, it still makes geographic and electrical sense that we don't try and service this. It'd cost us more to try and service it than it is to just work this out.
Exactly, you know. Yeah, really the relationship between Dixie and Washington City is just very strong, and we recognize there's no interest in either party to move into either service territory and in fact cooperate when it makes sense to, as I said, service of convenience to customers.
And maybe in your management report, you can give us an update on the bridge there and maybe even some of the land. Is that part of it?
It might actually be a closed session issue.
Okay.
If that's all right.
That's fine. That's fine. Well, Mayor, if there's no other discussion, I know that it does feel like we already passed this once, and so we're just, we're making it legal with an ordinance change as well. I'll make the motion that the city council approve an ordinance modifying and amending ordinance number 93-26 by adjusting the franchise area for the Dixie Escalante Rural Electric Association.
Thank you. I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilman.
Nice night.
Staley, aye.
Seg Miller, aye.
Turick, aye.
Thank you. It's approved. Item nine, agreement, consideration to approve an interlocal agreement between the city of St. George and Washington City regarding Suntran transportation service. City manager.
I'll probably turn this over to our city attorney with regards to questions with regards to the actual agreement. Since he drafted that, I will just mention that St. George's Suntran is in the process in the next 30 to 60 days. I can't remember the exact date to order buses, and that's why this is really timely for us because there's about an 18-month time on bus construction. So let me, with that, I'll let the council start. And that's why this is, this is really timely for us because there's about an eighteen month timeline of bus construction. So let me, with that, I'll, I'll let the council start answering questions.
Yeah, and in talking to St. George and Fred Davies. Davies, not Davis, right. Davies. That's why I wanted to, to move this. We've talked about the routes. We've talked about those things a number of times, I think, with the city council, but in order just to get the. The order for the bus in. We needed to move the interlocal agreement itself ahead. The agreement is, is based on what they'd done already with Ivans. We've adjusted it some just to make it a little cleaner, to the extent that because there's such a. There's a period of time between when you order that and when it actually shows up. In talking to Fred, he had no. Problems or worries about the fact that, that as a council. We still may want to adjust kind of where that routing is going specifically. We've had, the last time, we saw a couple of different routes. As I recall, the council liked almost all of what it looked like, but there were still some stuff that the council thought might want to be adjusted in terms of how that, that routing was. And that shouldn't be an issue in terms of just adjusting the routing and working together with Suntran to get a route that the council's very comfortable with. Certainly prior to when the bus gets here, so. There's, I put a provision in there that I have not yet ran past either Fred or Paula, who from the city attorney's office over there worked on this. This interlocal agreement, the Suntran stuff. Which would try to incorporate if we have some of that new funding that comes from potentially some of the transportation gasoline tax issues going on with the state legislature. That because some of the discussions have been about how those fundings would be distributed eventually to the cities. And it says to public transit agencies as opposed to, which makes it almost sound as if, you know. Most of the transit agencies in the state are separate from the cities or the counties that they're in, like UTA. And St. George has been adamant about the fact that. We don't want any of those funds to somehow be less and be diminished because St. George owns that transit system. I just wanted to make sure that, that if St. George is able to secure some of that funding that goes into Suntran, it will also be able to benefit from. Having the, the cost reduced for Washington City on, yeah, yeah, I just want to make sure, haven't run it past them yet. I don't think any of us know what's going to happen with the. Transportation funding, but I just want to make sure that's at least a, that's not forgotten or left unsaid, but I haven't run that past either Paula or Fred yet.
Jeff or Roger, are we able to pull the Exhibit A up on the monitors, maybe just for citizens to see that? I know I would be wondering about the cost of. Every good bus service comes with a price tag anymore. I just think the cost list is, I, I'm really pleased with how much of it's from matching funds or contributed funds, so we're able to get it at a pretty good deal on that pick.
That's what I can. Is it going to be the cost, is the cost.
Exhibit A.
Probably just throw it right on.
Maybe just throw it on the MO, yeah.
That's cleaner. Put this on. How to drop that on the other day. Again, hopefully what's going to happen with some of this transportation funding is that we may get, we get, may get an additional benefit from the fact that some of it may be routed towards. Public transit.
You look there at some of the total costs and then the, the percentages that Washington's responsible for, and I just think we're getting. A pretty good deal for. For the value that provides to the citizens that are going to need that.
Mike, Mike Shaw, so you're on kind of the committee to look at some of this transportation, additional transportation funding. Does this affect? As far as you know, does, is there potential for more funding to come through? For this type of a transit system or?
With the additional going out into the other communities, there is actual additional funding from the FTA that they will apply for and get. And some of the times that funding is only to cover infrastructure costs. Some of the times they'll get grant money to purchase, purchase buses. I think that might be something we want, might want to add in language. Also, the paratransit. I remember when they actually started initiating the transit in St. George, it was required by the. Federal officials that paratransit, they had to provide that, I believe it was a five mile boundary past their route, so. Washington City was getting that paratransit within that five mile boundary anyway, and so that might be something we might want to look at. Ivan City, if this was drafted off their agreement, they would have probably had to have that paratransit because they weren't previously included in it, but. Those are a couple of issues that I would suggest we actually look into.
Yeah, the paratransit is addressed and the, and that funding and how that might reduce costs as opposed to. Behavioral purchases, for example, is also addressed within it that, that could reduce. Again, I just wanted to make sure that we get some other additional funding.
Yeah, the funding is a big bundle that comes into the state every year, and then it's based off of the area served, so as they grow. It'll reduce what other areas are getting, but it will increase what St. George will receive. So, but every year, that's part of our NPOs, we vote on this funding package for the transit as well.
I know in some of the discussions that I've been involved with Fred. He's looked at some additional funds as part of this package, and so they may have already been somewhat costed into the package, knowing that. Through going out, having those available matching funds to go get those, those may have been taken into consideration already.
Right, well, and we've got a provision in there that talks about if that funding comes in and how it's applied and to the extent that it can be also carried. Through to reduce Washington City's cost also. Again, I think, I think to the extent that if we make that in any way that we're able to take advantage of that on a, on a, on an equal basis, based on, on how much we've put into. How much we'll be participating in this. Is, is always beneficial to us.
I'll just mention too, in light of the discussion we had last night, this probably will not have a twenty-seventeen budget impact, but a twenty-sixteen budget impact.
Okay, this hasn't come to St. George yet. We want to at least get it moving from our side. And, and again, like I said, and there's one provision that got bold and red just to make sure that they understand. I haven't talked to them about it. This issue just came up as of Monday this week because the transportation funding. Issue came up at legislative. The utility cities and towns. Transportation funding discussions. And the issue was raised, and I just thought we might as well put it in there now since it's. A potential that could benefit us also.
So are you looking for us to, to go ahead and. Pass this, which would then take it to them for approval, or we're just looking for red lines or?
Yeah, and, and the red, I mean, the only, the only portion that's in this one is it's redlined at this point is really just a note to make sure that it needs to be discussed and they need to, want to make sure that they. That it's not just being slipped in there otherwise.
The rest of it has been discussed with them, and they seem to, I mean, without going through the whole process, at least Paula and Fred are, are fine with what's there.
Right, and again, from our standpoint, the routing hasn't been locked in, and it won't be locked in, because I think we still have. Time to adjust that, and I don't even know how it works once we get it in place. Like, my understanding has always been, Roger is much more familiar with it, but. My understanding is that adjustments can and are expected to be made once you start the system and see how it kind of works.
Yeah, the, the routing that we proposed back with council input, they really liked, that it fit up pretty good, and they get their group groups to kind of make sure it fits as far as. You know, having the space to load and unload, those type of things. There might be some slight tweaks, but at the most part, once they get those routes set, they usually run them well before they start running. But we, but you're right in the fact that we still got eighteen months to do some tweaking, so that's not an issue.
And, and right now, right now it's up for twenty-two stops, as I recall from having seen it before. I mean, and it hits that route that, that the council had kind of thought. Makes the most sense for our citizens and, and the input that we've gotten, the input you guys have gotten up and gotten on your own from citizens also.
I'm excited to see this come forward. This has been something that this council's kind of worked towards, and the citizens have voiced a need for it, and I think there is probably a bigger need than we've really heard, to be honest, when it once it gets here, I think it's used.
I agree. I've been just kind of remembering back. I know Councilman Turek's been on the NPO and done a lot of work on this, and then I was remembering also Councilman Bill Hudson. How, how big of an issue this was for him. He's probably out enjoying his personal time somewhere, but I know he, he'd be pleased to know that we're, we're still progressing on an issue that was a, that was one that he really was champion for.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
And by the way, if, if, if it is approved for the mayor to be able to sign, once it's in a final form, that there'd be no substantive changes unless it came back to the council. I mean, there may seem to be some. Formatting issues or minor tweaks, including this whole. My intent that we get a reduction in the cost for the, for transportation funding to come through.
Yeah, and I like that language. I like, I like that addition. The only other question I have would be in regards to. Paratransit costs. I mean, it sounds like it's probably right that we, that we include that. Because would that, it sounds like from the route that we've already kind of preliminary drawn, that, that you're saying that, or Mike Shaw is saying that five miles out from that route, so it sounds like we would be still responsible for the. The paratransit costs. I just didn't know if.
I think, I think it was addressed, and I can't. Yes, paratransit.
Well, it sounds like there may have been some overlap prior to Suntran expanding into Washington City, but the way I interpret it would be that once Suntran is in Washington. Then we would be responsible for paratransit from five miles beyond our service line, so it sounds like that language probably needs to stay as I.
I think it's. Yeah, again, I think it's one of those over. Probably over there where the federal regulations are, but it doesn't seem like whatever it is is going to be, it would be in any way traumatic enough that it would change. The council's position that this is a good thing for the citizens.
Well, they are paying the lion's share of the, the cost of service anyway, so.
Well, and that's the nice thing about, we, they, they've been willing to do that, and I, I think it's beneficial. It's a win-win, I think, for both cities.
Yeah, I concur with what the councilmen have said. I think it's a great service to Washington. I think it's, it fits a need to, to those citizens that may, may have some special needs.
Thank you for your input, Councilman. Again, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and move that we approve an interlocal agreement between the City of St. George and Washington City. Regarding the Suntran transportation service per the agreement provided in our packet by Council Starkey.
I'd be happy to second that.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second.
Nice night.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item ten, report of officers from assigned committee. Anything to report on your committees? I failed them to excuse Councilman Truman. He's in Atlanta. On business, so he'll join us next time.
Mayor, the only thing I would add is have a good board meeting with the community educational, community education channel or CECTV, and. They felt like Veterans Day went very well. That was a bit of a challenge for them to come out and, and get everything, but they've. Determined that's something they'd like to do on an annual basis as they continue to fill content. They've also offered, you know, anything from Miss Washington City to, as you go around and meet with local businesses. However, they can support and spotlight our city. They're, they're looking to be, to be involved where, where they can, and they're just looking for us to let them know, so if, if anybody has an event that they would like to have covered. Then, you know, we can, we can let them know and they'll try to fit it in.
Councilman, would you email me that person that I would contact?
You bet.
So I can line them up. That'd be awesome. Anything else, gentlemen? We'll move on to the city manager report.
Mayor, well, we have the CEC people here. I, I don't know if you, if you realize it, but on your advertising for the city council meetings. It's listed, it lists Washington City's city council meetings at Thursday at noon. I don't know how that got that way, but. Oh, that's an airing out.
See it on TV.
Well, every, well, yeah, everybody, it seemed like everybody else was right in front of that, indicated the time in which the council or the planning committee or the county commission met, so.
Thank you. And thank you for all you do. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of projects I would just update the council on and the public on, and also just to remind the mayor that. Once we conclude here, you'll want to suspend this meeting in order to go into an MVA meeting.
Right.
And then we'll probably want to come back into this meeting. The reason we suspend, come back to this meeting is we can go into closed session. Anyway, so just a couple of items. East Regional Waterline, these are public works project. This project is underway. Project will start construction in January. And I'm just kind of picking some that are kind of in process right now. The area line replacement, this sewer design is underway with construction beginning in February. On the Stormwater, the Treasure Valley Trunk Line, this of course has been one that we've worked with other partners on. And the project is under construction. We completed in February. It's been a great partnership with the others. There's that thirty-ninety South Trunk Line. The design is complete. This project will connect the east areas of Washington Fields Road to the main trunk line. And that construction is scheduled for March. I know there's been interest in the two thousand South Signal. Of course, the equipment is ordered. They were well out on equipment order, but that timeframe has been reduced, so it has been ordered and will kind of bid that construction out once we get a little closer to delivery on that. I think we mentioned once before that we received seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on, to the city match for some safety improvements upon Telegraph. Looking at on the hill there with the garden rail and other things, essentially, the island area and those type of things. I know, I believe, I believe Mike answered for you. I think it was in the public meeting last night. Remind me of this, on the road. With Telegraph, okay, just so, again, that has to do it until that gets through settling, settling, we'll continue to just level that off, just for the benefit of the public. Continue to just level that off until that's completed and settled, and then we'll go in with the. Fix there. Washington Fields Road Phase Four, this is from Lost Bridge Drive to thirty-six fifty. That was also discussed a little bit last night, but. We'll start the project in February, working on that, and just working on some. Milepost eleven interchange, we. That we continue to work with UDOT and the consultants on that. We also. I don't have these dates here, but I'll give these to the dates. We will plan on our annual trip to the legislature. And we invite any of the council who would like to join us for that, and that is on the President's Day. Just can't think of the date right now. But it's the President's Day, it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we'll go up to the legislature. And of course, as part of that, the reason I connect it to the milepost eleven is because we have been talking to our legislative body about. Funding and those type of things with respect to that. So if you have an interest, please let us know as we are booking, we'll be booking accommodations here shortly. Southern Parkway, as you know, that construction start will be completed in November. Okay, for those who don't know, that's the Warner Valley to Washington Dam, so that's that connects. There. There is a preliminary alignment on Merrill Road, and they'll be applying for. Been added to the cog list, and we're getting applying for funds at the next cog meeting. And then we'll be holding a downtown, we haven't got the date yet, I don't believe yet, Mike, but it's going to be in February. An open house in the downtown to talk about curb veteran sidewalk. And so we'll be getting that message out, probably actually putting some notification door to door of all the downtown area. That, that are within that area of curb veteran sidewalk, just to get the citizens' input on what their feelings are and desires. So we'll have some map, we'll have maps, we'll have some how that would be properly, properly structured financially. And so people can get a feel of what does this mean, what is it going to amount to me, and then they can give us their input. Do we have an interest in this or do we not have an interest? So we'll be putting that, that'll be happening in February.
Is this planned to be a council meeting, like a, like a town hall or a?
No, we're going to do an open house on. No, we're gonna do an open house on a separate night.
Okay.
And I think we're shooting at maybe a Thursday night, right? That seems to avoid planning commissions and city councils and those type of things. Capital facilities plan for parks, that's been just a little bit delayed simply because of our sunrise engineering, the personnel that's been working on that has been out with some very significant health issues. We haven't been in a rush on that, so we've been working on that, but we'll be bringing that back to you. And then we're working on design and bid documents for Sullivan Park, for the construction on the Sullivan Park. Bill Jackson will be here between the 19th and the 23rd of January, and then we'll hopefully go to bid in February on Sullivan Park. And then on power, just Kelly had mentioned to you, we'll be, over the next three months, there'll be some work session time dedicated to talking about some of the power issues, capital improvements and other things that we have, as well as rate discussions as well. I think, Mayor.
That's it?
Well, there's more, but I didn't.
Okay.
No, that's the one I just talked about. So the capital facilities on the park impact, the sunrise was working on this, we had our main engineer working on this, it got knocked out for several weeks. Also, if you remember, we'd returned, we'd gotten questions back from the Southern Town Home Builders Association, we were responding, they were responding back to that, but it just kind of got delayed a week. So it's not back to you yet, so no, not yet. Hopefully in the next 30 to 45 days.
Okay. Any other questions for city manager?
Jack Fisher.
Yeah, Freelda Solos, the name.
Yeah.
I know what they want to do is get their community center built first. They've got the plans, I think, have been approved, and so I know they're up pushing dirt on the top of the knoll where that's gonna go. That'll be the first thing they'll build. But within that, then they'll have a sales office with all the pictures of the models they're gonna propose in that Phase 1. So that will be the first thing you'll see happen is that, and they gotta get the road up to it from, at least from Buena Vista, you can see they're already starting to. But if you go up actually on top of where Mill Creek Townhomes are, that, that road where that dies at the end of Mill Creek Drive, you can really take a good look and see all the other work that they're doing up there, leveling some pads and, you know, cutting in where the roads are gonna go, and, and that's the best vantage point to kind of look and see what's happening. But that's the plan right now, is that the community center, and it's a big, beautiful, I'm really excited to have that come first anyway, that'll set the tone for the whole development. And so hopefully they'll get to that point, they've still gotta come in for final plating, et cetera, on that, so they're at least getting recorded and everything. That's kind of where it's going.
Okay, we need to move into, we need to suspend this meeting and move into our MBA meeting, entertain a motion to do so.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we suspend city council meeting at this point and move into the Washington City Municipal Building Authority Meeting.
Okay, I have a motion, second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Nice night.
Salye, aye. Seg Miller, aye.
Turek, aye.
Thank you. Welcome to our Washington City Municipal Building Authority Me- meeting. Item 1 is approval of the agenda.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the agenda with the one item that's listed.
Thank you. Anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Nice night.
Salye, aye. Seg Miller, aye.
Turek, aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item 2, public hearing. Public hearing regarding the issuance and sale of not more than $3,700,000 aggregate principal amount of lease revenue bonds, Series 2015, and to receive input from the public with respect to any potential economic impact that the project described herein to be financed with the proceeds of the Series 2015 bonds may have on the private sector and related matters. City manager.
I was just gonna mention that the council approved what was called the Parameters Resolution in November, which kind of set out the outer parameters by which the bonds would be, these bonds would be closed, these of course are bonds associated with the police station. The Parameters Resolution established that this would not be more than 3.7 million, it would not exceed a 6.5% interest rate, however, you know, and let me come back to that in a minute, and not be more than 21 years. So those are the ceiling parameters. We are looking at $3.7 million, we're looking at interest rates probably more than, in the neighborhood, about 4.11, actually probably a little lower. Yesterday was actually the second lowest historic rates. And so probably, if approved, probably lock relatively soon on, on an interest rate, and for 20 years, not 21 years. So that's, so that's kind of the basis for the $3.7 million in the interest in terms.
This is a public hearing. You're welcome to come up and talk about it if you'd like. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Sherry Reader. I just need to get clarity, so this is the bonding for the police building, is that what this is? Okay. I just want to go on the record to say, I think the building is beautiful, and I love the whole idea of it. I just wonder if there has ever been a consideration for a different location than right here. And the reason being is this is attached to kind of our town, center of our town, and as the town grows, we get more people to our activities and things, and, and I can see, you know, if, if old license sales or different things, I can see issues with parking, and think that it would be a great idea down the road to revisit what our downtown looks like by the museum and maybe do a water feature, kind of a town square type thing. And, you know, so this is kind of all adjacent to where I would say our heart of our community is, and, and I know it's growing and things will change, but just wondering if there has been a consideration of any other locations. I know this is ideal location, and, and I'm not, you know, I just wonder if there's been a, any.
Yeah, there was, there was lots of consideration. In fact, I think it was me that brought it up, and then the police chief looked at a bunch of their areas and options, and they were all presented to the council, and the council approved this one. You could go review the voting record, it wasn't a unanimous vote, but yeah, this is the one that ended up being approved.
Okay, and so down the road, is there a vision of what the other, what, what would be on the other properties? You know, the other, like where the old parks building, the old fire station? I mean, do we have a vision of what this square area is gonna look like? Is there gonna be parking, or do we know?
I don't think there, there is right now. That's one of the goals that this council has set for this year, is to establish that vision and kind of, kind of put that a little more solidly in place than it is today.
Cause I.
So that's, that's something that will be coming forward. Part of, part of the reason that the station is kind of adjusted, as was mentioned, is because originally what was, was presented, it was stretching from 100 to, to Main Street and backing up, and, and some of the council members said, hey, look, we, you know, aesthetically, we'd like Main Street to have some different aesthetics there, and to be planned a little more and whatnot. So that's, they've, they've kind of been good to work with us. I may share a little bit about some of the other sites. One of the biggest issues in looking at other sites was the fact that we own property versus having to buy property, and that was, that became costly. I think that was probably the biggest, all of us had some of the concerns of this is the heart of our downtown, and there's not a whole lot of property there. That, that issue was raised very, very loud and looked at, but when it came down to, to cost, well, that was kind of.
Makes sense. And I do like it being more on this side myself. And I know there's been talk down the road of maybe, you know, if the church moves, that the city may buy that, you know, building or whatever, and so, you know, taking all that into consideration, I just think it's ideal to, to extend this area, this park, and do something that, you know, we talk about, we want people to come downtown, we want people to come downtown, make something that we have, you know, control over, we, we have the property here that's appealing, that will bring people into downtown, and so just something to consider. And thanks, Jeff, for, for pointing that out. I, I do get that, you know, when you have the property, you don't have to buy it, but, you know, I hope that as you are planning and, and looking at it, that you'll kind of take into consideration, you know, giving it all a facelift. If we're, if our goal is to truly draw people down into town, then we need to make it some reason for them to come, and, and, you know, businesses will come if we have the right thing, and, you know, I hate to bring up St. George, but a prime example is what they've done with their Main Street, and, and the businesses have, you know, grown with their town square. And I think that that is something that, as a city, we do celebrate in downtown, always in our old Veterans Park. So just something to consider, and, and again, I think the rendering is gorgeous and fits really well with what we've got going. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Nice night.
Salye, aye. Seg Miller, aye.
Turek, aye.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we adjourn the, the MBA meeting of Washington City and move back to our city council meeting.
I'll second.
I'll have a motion in a second.
Turek, aye.
Seg Miller, aye. Salye, aye.
Nice night.
Thank you. Now we can move ahead to, we do need to go to a closed session to discuss the lease and sale of property. I'll entertain a motion that we conclude our meeting here and adjourn to a closed session.
So moved.
Thank you.
Nice night.
Salye, aye. Seg Miller, aye.
Turek, aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.